Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And welcome to our December Town Hall meeting, recorded before a live studio audience. Make some noise. Thank you. All right, we have the lucky 13. We have 13 residents with us this morning, and thank you all for being here seriously. We are looking continuously for ways in our socially distant times to continue to keep our residents involved, keep our residents engaged in as many ways as we can. We know that the Town Hall meeting typically attracts, gosh, probably upwards of 80 residents during regular times, during normal times, if you will. So we know it's quite a popular event, and we believe always that it's worth your time every month because we share a lot of information. So it's nice to be able to have some representation of the resident body here with us so that we can once again interact, perhaps a little more personally, not quite the way yet that we have done in the past, but baby steps, right? Baby steps. So again, we have 13 residents here today, and I encourage those of you in the audience to, if you have a question, then we'll follow our regular format. When we get to the end, please ask questions if you have any. And for those watching from home on one of the recordings we'll be showing, we'll leave information at the end again, as we always do, as to how you can ask questions of us after the presentation, and we'll be happy to answer anything for you that we can. So today is December the... Now we have 14. Tony, come on in. It's a special guest, Tony Fonseca, ladies and gentlemen. Tony Fonseca.
Where's his microphone?
We should give him his microphone. No, Tony, I'm just kidding.
That's what I was looking for.
Great to have you here, Tony. All right, so today is December 11th, and I guess today, last night, was the beginning of Hanukkah. So today is the first full day of Hanukkah, I guess is how I would state that. So Happy Hanukkah to all of our residents who celebrate. I heard a story on the news last night. You know, they were showing various places where they were lighting the menorah in the first night. And there was one of the stories on the news, a rabbi was speaking and saying that, you know, obviously, this has been one of the more difficult years any of us have endured. But that the story of Hanukkah and the menorah is that even when you're at your darkest, there is always light going forward, right? And I think that is a message that we all can carry forward this year in what has been, without question, one of the most difficult time periods any of us have faced. But we have faith, and we know that there is light going forward, and we're going to see that soon, God willing. So with that, Happy Hanukkah, and we will get our meeting started. It is chock full of information, just like always. We have a series of presenters today. So without further ado, my first guest is Tina Henneman, our administrator over Village Point, and she's going to share what's going on across the street. So here's Tina.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's nice to see faces. It has been a long time, so I hope everybody is doing well. And I'm going to give an update on what's going on across the street at Village Point. Currently at Village Point, we're currently in phase zero, meaning we are not allowed to have any indoor visitation and only essential personnel at this time. We haven't been able to open up to indoor visitation since March. We were able to do some outdoor visitation once the weather was, you know, warm. Now that it's cold, we're still in phase zero because we still have some active cases going on at Village Point, whether that be in-house or ones that came into Village Point. So unfortunately, we have been doing Zoom calls for family members, window visits for family members, so they can either talk and see their loved one. So that has been going while the family understands the situation and have been, you know, we send out communication weekly so they understand what's going on in-house. We are still currently connecting our weekly testing to COVID-19 testing, so we still continue. We had started that since May, and we are still doing so weekly for all staff and all residents every week. One thing we just started, the Department of Health rolled out a pilot COVID-19 rapid testing. It started last Monday, November 30th, and will end tomorrow. It's every other day. So we started last week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And then for this week is Sunday, Tuesday, Thursday, and tomorrow, Saturday. Basically, it's only for all staff and vendors coming into building. It's like a rapid testing. It was provided by the state. Basically, it's a nasal swab that we do. You put it in a solution into a car and wait 15 minutes, and it tells you, it gives you either a result of a positive or negative. So we have been doing that for the past, you know, over a week and a half, and we were fortunate enough to have good results. We had one employee that tested positive. However, we believe it was a false positive because she did three PCR tests, which is the regular testing for any of those who do testing here. The regular nasal faridil swab that they sent out to the lab come back in about two days. So she had three negatives. So we're assuming it's a false positive. There are likely that there are false positives with those tests as well. Not everything is 100% accurate. So we have been reporting those results to the Department of Health every other day as well. In the past few weeks, we also had, we also had the Department of Health stop by. As you know, they come on, come in unannounced to do a COVID-19 infection control survey. We had one back in June 29th, one in August 5th. They came in November 10th. It was three surveyors. Basically, they come into the building. They review our policies and procedures. They interview staff and managers. They go on to the units. They observe the staff while going into resident rooms, especially any residents that came back from the hospital or any residents that are positive. They want to make sure that they're using their proper PPE when going in and out the rooms, that they're disposing their PPE before they leave the room, and also they observe a few staff members washing their hands. Because as you know, proper hand washing is the best thing to do with infection control and, you know, to stop the spread of COVID-19. So they came in on November 10th. They spent, you know, most of the day there. They exited. We were found to be in compliance, no deficient practice. All over three weeks later, they showed up last Friday on December 4th. This time it was two surveyors. They were different from the ones on November. Same thing again. They came in morning. They actually came on a date that we're doing a rapid testing, so we had to do a rapid test on them. Then they asked for same information, reviewed the COVID-19 policies and procedures. They interviewed the staff to make sure that they understand the policy procedures, and they were following it. They asked for our in-service, which is our education provided to the staff. They wanted to make sure that we were educating the staff ongoing on any changes that's going on with the Department of Health or CDC. They actually commended the staff. They said all staff answered appropriately. They also exited that same day. Jay actually got results the same day as well. We were found to be in compliance once again. So we had four infection control surveys. It seems that's going to be the trend. They will pop in unannounced, especially with the numbers going up in New Jersey to make sure that we are doing everything safely and correctly to ensure that there's no more spread across for staff and our residents. And that's all I have. Thank you, everybody. Have a good one.
Thank you, Tina. I can't tell you how proud I am of the team over there at Village Point. Tina just reviewed the last two times the Department of Health has been in. Obviously, everyone is taking the COVID-19 pandemic very, very seriously, and the Department of Health is doing their part, if you will, by visiting, as we always call it when they show up. We always say we have company. Visiting to make sure that communities like ours are doing what we should be doing to provide for the best health and safety of all of our residents. And time and again, we have seen that everyone at Village Point is doing their part and then some. And it's been validated independently by the Department of Health. The folks over there are working tremendously hard each and every day to keep everyone safe, to keep themselves safe, to keep one another safe. And, you know, I think we all know it is wearing on us. It's wearing on them too, but they remain vigilant, and it is a great source of pride for me to know that I work with such a committed group of people that are dedicated to making sure that those they serve are safe. So there's my little plug of the day for the team at Village Point and the great job that they have been doing and will continue to do, I'm sure. So we move from Village Point to over here again at Monroe Village. And next on our speaker series is Nathan Perez, our Director of Sales and Marketing. You may have seen him and his team out and about quite a bit more lately, whether it be with folks who are visiting the community in an appropriate manner or folks that have moved in and become new, our newest family members, if you will. So here's Nathan to give you a little update on where things have been in his area and where we see things going in the next few months. So here's Nathan.
Good morning, everybody. Or afternoon, whenever you're watching this at home.
It's still morning.
Morning for us, but someone might watch it at home later. So I'll give you a roll-up of where we are for the year, and then I'll give you a highlight from last month and what we're doing going forward, like we do every month. So in terms of our sales goal for the year, we did have a goal of about 36 at this point. In the year, we have 27 sales. That's obviously still being impacted by the pandemic. You know, that's better than some of our competition out there and better than some of our sister communities. So we're just trying to maintain focus on positivity, staying positive, and getting as many folks in as we can during a really stressful, kind of crazy time. In terms of closings, we had a goal of 37 so far at this point in the year, and we had 28 closings so far. In the month of November, we had four sales, which is great. And we actually had seven move-ins into independent living. We had one move-in into assisted living, a direct move-in from outside of our community to join us into assisted living, which is encouraging as well. And then we did hold two events. The events that we're holding are limited capacity to ensure safety. We're pre-screening everybody before they even come into the building. And then obviously, they're going through the regular routine questionnaire and temperature checks. We had 51 folks reserve spots for those two events, and 25 people attended those events. So some continued interest there in terms of our events and appointments. In terms of appointments, our conversion ratios are pretty high from our subsequent visits. First visits are a little bit down numerically. What that tells us, kind of between the story of the numbers, is that although people are a little hesitant to come to see the community, anyone visiting the community is very interested, right? If you're going to come out of your home and all this and really look at a senior living community, you're probably pretty serious. So that's encouraging as well. For the month of December, we have two move-ins scheduled so far. Two to three sales are anticipated. We have actually two to three apartments that are on hold. People are working on their applications and getting the deposit checks ready to deposit before the end of the year. This month, we had, we'll have two events on the 8th and the 15th. They are several time slots. We are limiting the capacity of our events to 10 folks or under, which is actually pretty much the interest level that we are getting. We're doing two time slots during the day, each of those days, so that we can kind of max out the amount of people we're speaking to as best we can. They are a Discover and Dash event, so in terms of where we're having it and just kind of what we're doing, we've changed that up a bit. We actually meet with people here in the auditorium, give them a presentation, question and answer period, and then we actually send them home with a small lunch that our dining service team prepares for them. So we're not having anybody join us for dining indoors, again, just with safety in mind and just trying to keep all of you comfortable and safe as well as the rest of the staff. Our social media tactics continue. If you are following us on Facebook, which I encourage all of you to do, spread the word about the community. You'll see a lot of pictures about the community, whether that's us taking pictures of people's homes right before they move in to show off the new standards that we provide to them in terms of renovation or programs that Steve and Cindy are putting on. What else have we done? We're starting to do resident testimonials onto the social media platform. So there's all the really great stories and pictures on there. It's an opportunity to see yourselves and your neighbors, and we're continuing those efforts. If you are online, you can, you know, see a lot of us online in terms of advertising as well. And we're starting to do TV advertising. That's something that we started this year and beefed up during the pandemic. So I believe we're on, I know we're on Fox and a couple other channels. You've probably seen our commercial if you watch those channels, certain time slots. Ways you can help support our social media tactical plan. Pose for pictures. If you see myself or Joe running around taking pictures, we're not going to post your face unless you give us permission, but we would certainly, you know, like for you to pose for pictures every now and then just show off the fun that you're having or the programs that you are starting up and continuing to keep going. So you might see us in the back of the room, or you might see us asking for a quick shot of five or six people to take a picture of. Referrals, I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, referring our friends and family members to us, and just spreading the good word. That's how you can really help us out the most. We've just completed or are continuing a testimonial series that we reintroduced this year with the COVID pandemic kind of story coming through and helping us out with online reviews. If you do have a Gmail, email, work on that platform, or if you are following the Facebook page and you have a Facebook profile yourself, a really great way to help us out is to recommend the community. Doesn't have to be a really in-depth testimonial. It doesn't have to cover everything out there that we do. Just a really short couple of sentences. I've lived here X amount of years, and here's some of the things that I like about it. It's really that simple, and that could really help us a lot in terms of getting a good word out there. This is a recent testimonial from someone in the room, as many of you on that know her well. Esther Race. This is actually a really great example of a short testimonial. Some people that participated in the recent testimonials gave a much, you know, much longer. We actually have a full page on them. It really could be something as simple as this. Long to see a picture of Esther here. Longtime Monro Village resident Esther Race, who has served in the community in many ways, including as Resident Association President and Board Resident Representative, offered this reflection on the community. Monro Village has been my home for the past 18 years. Many things have happened in that time. The caring and kindness of dedicated staff and friendly residents are always here to help, aid, and comfort me. COVID-19 has tested all of us. We are proceeding to live in a slightly different lifestyle, but we here in Monro Village are safe and comfortable in our homes. That says it all, right? So something like that or even something about your personal story of why you chose to move here. You can even talk about the contract that you chose, whatever it is that you want to get that good word out there to other folks about. Want to thank some of the other participants so far. A big thank you to the following people. Ginny Phillips, who is the daughter of Joan and Jim Hayden. She provided a really great testimonial from the perspective of an adult child who has parents that live here. Barry and Marcia Falk, who are a little bit newer to the community. Eleanor Newell, Carol Payon, Joe Radner, and of course Esther Race, who we just showed. So thank you. And if you are interested in participating, just reach out to us, as a couple others in the room have done since then, and we'll help you create a testimonial story and take a nice picture of you. So in terms of resident referrals, if you do have family, friends, cousins, a long-distance friend, I don't care, anybody that could really use some help in terms of understanding who and what we are, just let them know about us. See if there's any interest at all. Give us the name and the contact info, whether that is their number and address or even just an email, and we'll take it from there. I think you guys know us well enough to know we're not hard salespeople. Yes, I like to get people to join the community. Yes, we do follow the leads, where they need to go, but we have a very educational approach to people. We don't really hound people unless it's really appropriate for them to move here. So spread the good word about the community to your friends and family. Bring us their contact information. We're going to invite them to in-person tours, virtual tours, whatever they're comfortable with during the pandemic. If they end up moving into the community, you will receive one month free. All right, that's our way to thank you for your referral. Thank you all for your continued assistance and support, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nathan. Well, we keep getting drop-ins. I feel like I should have a doorbell when people drop in. Ding dong, here I am. All right, so Nathan covered it all there when it really comes to all of you and how important you all are to the success of our community in every facet, in every way, shape, and form. You are Monroe Village. We're just folks who kind of circle about in your orbit, in your universe. Your stories and your communication to others who might be interested in joining all the fun that we have here is really what drives the success of our community. So we really do value and appreciate all that you do in that regard, whether it be those testimonials that some of you have given, whether it be referrals of your friends or maybe some guy you met at the grocery store, I don't know, who might be interested in coming to live here at Monroe Village. All of that has tremendous value and tremendous meaning for us. And again, thank you, thank you, thank you for those of you who have done those things to share with others all of the good stuff that happens here at Monroe Village. We really, really do appreciate it. One of the good things that happens here at Monroe Village is maintenance. Okay, all right, that joke fell flat. But so maintenance is run by our good friend Stan Mazekovich, who got really excited on Wednesday. Does anybody know why Stan got really excited on Wednesday? Steve does.
Steve does.
Steve knows why Stan got really excited on Wednesday. Why did Steve get... Steve, why did Stan get really excited on Wednesday?
It snowed.
It snowed! That's right. Stan gets excited when it snows. I look at Stan and give him dirty looks when he gets excited when it snows. All kidding aside, Stan is here to share a little bit about our protocols for snow for the winter season and to give us all an update on what's going on in the maintenance department. Trust me, we are well-covered when it comes to snow here at Monroe Village, all because of our good friend Stan Mazekovich.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So like Jay said, we had a little snowflakes on Wednesday, and I definitely was excited. It's the time of the year. So I wanted to review with you our snow removal policy. If a resident would like to have their car cleaned off, it would be a $15 charge for snow removal that is three inches and below. If we have snow amounts that are four inches and above, we would collect all car keys at the front desk. Keys will be divided up by lots. And once a snowstorm has ended, we'll begin to clean all the cars off. We'll move them back to plow and have the lots, and we'll have them back. Once everything is complete, we'll give the car keys back to everyone. Today, I also want to let you know that we'll be doing filter changes in your apartments over the next few weeks. The schedule will be posted on Touchdown. And that leads me to introduce Juan Ramirez. Juan Ramirez, he's our new HVAC maintenance team member. Come on, Juan, say a few words.
I would like to thank Stan for giving me a chance to start a new journey here with you guys. And I've been here a few weeks, and I feel really, really happy to help everybody with your heating system and cooling system and any electrical problems you got. So I'll be here to help you guys.
Awesome. Thank you, Juan. Thank you, Juan. Enjoy the holidays. We'll see you soon.
Thanks, Stan. So we hope we don't see too much of the S-word. That's just me. You know, it's pretty to look at. And I guess what, really, all kidding aside, to remember for all of you is, it is pretty to look at. So if we do have a snowstorm, enjoy it from the comfort of your apartment. Look out the window, see how beautiful it is, and don't worry about it. We've got you all taken care of and all covered. And remember that during this snowstorm, in the height of the storm, okay, we're focused on keeping the roadways clear, meaning access from Half Acre Road into the community in the event of an emergency, if we need to get an ambulance in or something else. So we're really keeping the main roadways clear, and we're not necessarily as worried about the parking lots, in particular, in between the parked cars and everything. And Stan just reviewed how we handle snow removal of your cars. So if it snows, don't worry. We've got plenty of bread, plenty of milk, plenty of eggs. You don't need to rush to the grocery store the minute the last flake of snow falls, okay? We will get you taken care of and get you whatever you need. So just let our crew do their thing. They'll take care of it. You stay inside, stay warm, and enjoy the beauty of the snow from inside looking out. Speaking of beauty, our next one up is Cindy Felth. Did you like that? That was pretty good, right? Cindy Felth, our Director of Resident Services, who has been the hostess with the mostess the last few weeks with all sorts of activities, programs, and events along with our Lingwell Director, Steve. Cindy's going to tell you a little bit about some of the things that have been going on and a little bit else about her world of resident services. So here's Cindy.
Thank you, Jay.
Do you want me to drive?
Yeah, sure, that would be great. Hello, everybody. And once again, it is so wonderful to see people in the auditorium. We are very grateful to have an audience and to have you back in some form. I want to start with, everyone got a point set up, and it was so wonderful. The local Girl Scouts, so there were 12 troops, got their money together, pulled their resources, wrote the cards, and came and delivered them. And this is the niece of Michael Conahan, who's a resident, and she took it upon herself to adopt us, so that was wonderful. Here we have some pictures of residents with their point setters. And then, so, just so you know, if you would like to write a thank you, because it is 12 groups, and it's the Monroe Township, Jamesburg, I'm looking at the letters, Spotswood and Helmeta Girl Scout Groups. We have their address up at the front desk, so if you want to grab that, so you can put a card in the mail, that would be wonderful. So, thank you to Michael's niece and all the girls who worked so hard on that. And then, next. And unfortunately, we couldn't do our thank you and our exchange of the Resident Appreciation Employee Fund. And it is a really mutual endeavor, because we so appreciate you, and we really are here because we love to serve, and we really do care about you guys. So, to get that appreciation back is so wonderful for the residents. And I'm sorry that we weren't able to do that in person like we do every year, because that's really meaningful. But, please know that your gift was so generous to all of us, and we really appreciate it. And also, the galves included a cookie for every single resident, and that was also very appreciated. So, thank you, Julianne. Larry?
Our pleasure. It was for the staff?
Right, it was for the staff. Oh, hold on.
I just want to say one thing. We received a very nice thank you from... And it was signed by all the members of the dietary staff. I have posted that on our bulletin board, so you can see it.
Right, so there are thank yous that are popping up now by the bulletin board, by the post office, you know, your mailboxes. And Betty did a lot of work on that in the past.
I have to give Larry Shepherd some...
And Larry Shepherd, she says. I don't know if you all heard that, but Larry and Betty and Esther have done it in the past. Okay, next, Medicare cards. You're all gonna be getting your new Medicare cards. Can you please bring them to the front desk? We need to make photocopies for your medical file, and that way, we'll be on top of it should you need any help going forward. Oh, here's a juicy one, guys. Okay, so, it's really hard with the holidays knowing whether to go and be with family or to stay here. Most people chose for Thanksgiving to stay here, and we all got through it. It wasn't as joyful as usually, it usually is with family, but we all got through it. If you're choosing to go and be with family for Hanukkah or Christmas or New Years, you would be required to do a 14-day quarantine in your apartment, which means you can't attend to any programs or events or go on the bus. You can go and get your mail, and you can go out of the building. Meals will be delivered to your apartment free of charge. And another part of that is that the live-in aides, if they go out, they need to be tested upon arrival back into the community. Okay, so that brings me to testing of private-duty aides. It's very important that all aides get tested every single week. As the resident, if you have a private-duty aide who's with an agency, they're already doing that, but you need to make sure. But, if you have a private-duty aide that you're just employing yourself, it's very important that you get that aide tested every single week. That is your responsibility to the community. So, if you have questions about where to do that, people have been good, but I want them to return the test results to the front desk, please, so that we have them every week, we have that list. And then, if your aide goes away for a week, for the holiday or for the weekend, please make sure upon arrival they are tested before they come back. And always, you can call me with any questions, I'm here to help. And I hope everyone has a peaceful, content holiday. I think that's what we can ask right now. Oh, one more juicy thing. So, we have a new phone number that you can dial. If you want to hear what's going on during the day, you dial 6486, and it's me being very perky, sorry. I'm very perky in the morning. My husband will just say Cindy, coffee, I haven't had coffee. But, I list every day what the events are, what the programs, the bus trips. So, you can just, if you're having trouble reading it, this is another mode of communication for those people. So, you can call that, I usually do it around 9:00 a.m. in the morning. Okay, anything else?
No.
And I'm done. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Cindy. As somebody who typically sees Cindy shortly after 9:00 a.m., at least on the days of the week that we're all here together, yeah, she's perky. So, listen to those messages, it's another great mode of communication. We thought it would be another good way for us to be able to share with all of you all of the options and choices you have throughout the day, the programs, the events, all the news that's fit to print. It's in print, and it is now audible too. So, take advantage of that. And the other thing I wanted to stress from Cindy's report for those of you who do have in-home support by way of private-duty aides, I cannot stress enough the importance of making sure that those folks are being tested regularly for COVID-19. That is for your protection, that is for their protection, being the private-duty caregiver. And it's also for the protection of your fellow residents here at Monroe Village. We have all done such a good job of keeping the bubble, as I've been calling it since way back in the beginning, keeping that bubble pretty tight, keeping it pretty safe. And we've had success as a result of that. We've had very few cases of COVID-19. And yeah, knock on wood, as Steve is doing in the back of the room. And that's because of everyone's vigilance. Everyone has been doing their part and then some. Having our private-duty team members tested and seeing those test results is part of doing your part and being responsible to yourself, to them, and to your fellow residents. So, we cannot stress enough the importance of doing that and getting us that information. And thank you for your continued cooperation with that. Alright, so next up is Steve Ween. We all know Steve, our Live Well Program Manager. And before Steve comes to the stage, I just want to note that, I don't know if you've taken the opportunity to wander around the clubhouse, to wander around the hallways of Monroe Village. Now, I'm not old enough to have remembered the big joy that might have come from going to New York, to Macy's, to see what the window was when they opened it up for the display. They still do those things, I know, but I guess in today's day and age, it's lost some of its luster when that stuff happens. Steve did that for us here at Monroe Village. I came in the Monday after Thanksgiving, and I teased Steve, and I said, "It looks like Santa Claus threw up here over the weekend." And I meant that in the kindest, most complimentary way. It was kind of a gross way to put it, I guess, but... Steve made Monroe festive for Christmas, for Hanukkah, for the holiday season. And I don't know how to put this, other than it's from here with Steve. It's from the heart. And the place looks great, and it really lifted my spirits when I saw it coming in after Thanksgiving, and I hope it lifted all of your spirits as well. Just, again, seeing something that's normal, for lack of a better term. I don't know how to describe it other than that. That gives us joy, that gives us an uplifting feeling, that makes us feel positive about things to come. So, I just wanted to note that, and thank Steve, because it really was all him. He had some little elf helpers, don't get me wrong. I don't want to make it sound like it was all Steve, but it was pretty much all Steve. So, thank you for bringing that joy to all of us here at Monroe Village, Steve. I can't tell you how much we all appreciate it. So, with that, entering from the opposite side of the stage, the one to be different, Mr. Steve Ween.
Do you want to drive?
If you want me to drive.
I hate driving, so...
Hey, dude, I'll drive!
My wife always wants to drive, that's all she's saying.
Stay away from that one.
Yeah, thank you for the nice words and the applause, and welcome, everyone. Also, from the, your living room couch, let's say. And just wanted to start with an update. So, I believe the Sirius radio that feeds music through your in-house television stopped working Sunday. I had to check my sources when I came in Monday. And thank you for letting us know, we got the message. So, that's why I want to let everyone know that we are going to fix it, obviously. We are getting a technician out here next week. So, thank you for being patient, and it's nice to know that it is... I appreciated the music, so thank you for that. Some key locations. Like we said earlier, we do have new people, and your reminders are okay for the people who have lived here. So, my office is near the restaurant. We call that the Live Well Hub. So, the Live Well Hub has the calendars located in the magazine racks. And we also are, as you know, from November 17th, we started signing for entertainment that way, on that decks, the table. So, I just want to let people know that going forward, that would still be the model of what we were doing with the Live Well Hub. Next is the Live Well Center. So, right, there's a difference. The Live Well Center is the gym, the pool, the community room. And as of right now, you know, we're not doing any massages, but we did have a spa room. And once, you know, things get better, we'll be looking, returning that service as well. But, that's what it means for what we say Live Well Center. And in the calendars and the weekly, you know, we are doing things in the community room, so that's why it's labeled C as in Charlie, R as in Robert, Community Room. Next, so, New Year's Eve concerts. Right, heavy on the word concert. You know, here we are, December 11th, so we have done concerts. And, you know, it's not the party, unfortunately. But, we wanted to do the same model, so we are going to have entertainment by day and night. They have been here before. Not for New Year's Eve, but they have been here before. And the performance times will be 4 o'clock, 5:30, 7. So, the same rules will apply. Signups will probably go officially... I'm here this Saturday, because we do have a show this Saturday, so it would probably release after I leave tomorrow night. So, if you want to sign up, I encourage everyone to do that Sunday, Monday. The 30 seats is not going to go anywhere right now, so... But, we have had success. And again, thank you for understanding those rules that we have to follow. Okay, another new, with all the mandates we've been dealing with, happy hour. So, we've started happy hour substitution last month. That was called Thirsty Thursdays. Again, we are evaluating as we go. It was, it was working out, obviously, with the social distance, it's very difficult. And like I said earlier, with the mandates that are coming out daily, weekly, we do have to adapt. And I believe we got a mandate right before we were going to print the December calendars. And, you know, working not just with me, but all the leadership here, that seemed to be something that we needed to change. So, that's why we did change this month, grab-and-go happiness. And, you know, people liked the name when I just came up with it, so we kept it, okay? And it actually, last week was its first grab-and-go. We actually did better than Thirsty Thursdays, a number game. But, you know, there are reasons. Thirsty Thursdays were by reservation. Tables in here, 22 spots. Grab-and-go last week, we had 25. And the reason why it is by the Live Well Center is we wanted to have everyone have the opportunity to grab-and-go happiness. But, you know, from all the good days, and the good days will come again, you know, when I was here, people just came and go, and they sat in the lovely chairs that we have in the clubhouse. Unfortunately, we can't do that because of the numbers game. I mean, happy hour, you know, a year ago, we were seeing about 60 to 80 people. So, we'd be definitely breaking some kind of mandate. So, we are looking into these two functions, actually, next month. I mean, again, we are looking at the mandates that come daily or weekly. So, again, thank you for understanding that. But, we do have a good plan in place to do this, two ideas like a hybrid. So, we would be looking at reservations in here, and probably in the bar, actually, a to-go spot. So, people did like to take their drink and go to the, your home, your apartment, or even take it to the dining room. You know, we'll probably be looking at some kind of hybrid situation. And lastly, Christmas vacation. I'm going to be away, I'm gonna be in my home, okay? I'm expecting one visitor, he's coming through the chimney, I'll check his temperature. Just a little joke. But, you know, thank you again for appreciating everything that we are doing as a team here. And if you do need an answered question, and because I stressed this, the New Year's Eve concert, I won't be here, but how we've been doing the signups will be, I said, this week. So, I will be here next week. I will have people looking at that list. As of so far, we haven't turned anyone down. I haven't had to make phone calls just to, unfortunately, your number 32. We have to move you and your wife to the early performance. If you don't get a call, you're okay, okay? We just listed the concert for tomorrow night on Touchdown. And again, I'm not perfect, so if you do have a question about that, just reach out to my office. But, as everyone knows too, I'm not always in my office. I'm usually running things or...
Running?
Yeah, period. But, and another tip is, we've been averaging maybe, out of those people on the list, four people maybe don't show. So, I can't guarantee you the day of, but I'm coming in every Saturday night. I know Cindy's gonna help out next weekend. So, there is someone who can read, take temperatures. We do want the room to be filled. So, again, my insider trading would be, if you do want to try to get in a show and you're on the list, you can wait in the hallway, social distance, and we do wait. But, again, if we know who's showing up, everyone's pretty prompt with the time. We open up the house before entertainment 15 minutes before, okay? And obviously, you do have to wear a mask the whole entire performance. And again, looking forward, things getting better. And again, thank you for your time, like always, and happy holidays.
Steve, Steve, I can understand where you sign up for New Year's Eve. Is that going to be down in the hub?
Yes.
So, you have the papers out there for signing up already?
I'm gonna repeat it again. New Year's Eve signups will go out after I leave tomorrow night. So, I will be here until 8 o'clock. I'm gonna put it out. At the Live Well Hub.
The Live Well Center.
Live Well Hub. Okay, right by my office.
Outside of your office.
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, so, Steve talked a lot about lists. My question is, is he keeping a nice list and a naughty list? What's he doing over there? I guess we don't want to be on Steve's naughty list, do we? Then we don't get to go to the show. No, so, so as you can see, we've been putting a lot of effort into creating ways to keep you all engaged, keep you all involved, and doing it as best as we can under what continues to be interesting times, to say the least. And one of the things that Steve does is he works very, very closely with our Dining Services Team, with Mike Worsbowski. And obviously, this time of year, that partnership is even more crucial, because we have a lot of events that are going on, concerts, things like that. And we want to try to tie it to the season in terms of what our offerings are in our two dining venues. So, with that, I'm gonna introduce Mike Worsbowski, our Director of Dining Services, who's going to share with you a little bit about all the goings-on and all that is yet to come, because the best is yet to come, in Dining Services. So, here's Mike.
Thanks, Jay, good morning, everyone. It's nice to see an audience today. That's something we haven't had the past, the past few months. So, as Jay had mentioned, it's been a very, very busy past couple of months in Dining Services. You know, we went from, you know, having our Thanksgiving, traditional Thanksgiving Day menu, and now we're, we're busier than a bunch of elves right now in Dining Services, so especially this week. You know, we, as Jay had mentioned too, you know, we worked with Steve this week in getting everyone out the containers of snacks and goodies and wine and things like that. So, everyone seemed very appreciative of that, and I'm happy that, you know, we were able to help Steve, you know, do that. We baked over 1,100 sugar cookies, just to make up the containers. So, it was a busy day. And, you know, the first night of our Holiday Gala kind of substitute was this week. So, you know, we had a special concert night specials. So, I know Stan was excited about the first snow of the season, but our residents were much more excited about lamb chops that we had the other night. So, you know, that was something that, you know, we kind of put off doing on the specials for, you know, these concert night specials. So, I'm glad everyone, you know, enjoyed the menu and the specials that day. So, last night also was the first night of Hanukkah, as was mentioned before. So, you know, we did some special Hanukkah specials on the menu, on our seasonal menus. And next week, coming up is the second part of the Holiday Gala. So, once again, we'll be doing some concert night specials for that too. And I think it worked out very well. We're, you know, working with Steve, we tried to coordinate the concert times around the seating times. So, you know, we had to adjust some things this year due to COVID-19. So, but I think we did a pretty good job, and it worked out pretty well with trying to coordinate all that. Coming up, we will have special menus for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. We have some nice things planned for our specials with our seasonal menus for those days, as well as New Year's Eve. And I'm gonna jump into the first day of January for New Year's Day as well. So, I just wanted, just a quick reminder that we will have some modified hours for those four days. That will be Christmas Eve Day, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve Day, and New Year's Day, we will be serving the main meal from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. on those days. And we will be featuring, you know, some very nice specials that we have planned. With the, you know, I've, you know, I just want to talk about the seasonal menus a little bit. You know, I think that, you know, that was probably one of the biggest changes that we implemented once we were able to reopen both of our dining venues here, that being the Village Bistro and the Fireside Restaurant. Was to implement something that we've talked about for quite a while, you know, with our Dining Committee meetings for the... dining committee meetings for the independent living residents, and the resident council meetings that I attend with the assisted living residents. And you know, that's with the seasonal menus, I think, you know, it's definitely been a step in the right direction in terms of improving the food program here. You know, when I, I'm in the dining room and I stop by folks, you know, your tables and ask how things are, you know, it gives us a little bit more flexibility because some of the feedback that I get from residents are, you know, when are we gonna have this on the menu? We haven't had that in a while. You know, doing the daily specials and things like that, I think it gives us some flexibility to be more responsive in a relatively short amount of time to put some of those things on the menu, you know, as a daily special for something that we haven't had. You know, some folks have, you know, said to me, well, you know, I like the Greek salad, I like the spinach salad. So it gives me an opportunity to get those on the menus in a few days' notice and get those things, you know, featured for everyone. So it's kind of, you know, we're doing the menus in-house as far as printing them. We have to use the disposable menus right now. But we're not bound by a pre-printed menu that we get from, you know, our printing company, and then we're kind of stuck with that. So it gives us some flexibility to change things based on the feedback from the residents, and I also monitor the sales reports, so I know what everyone's ordering. You know, and I take a look at that and review those on a weekly basis too. So if I see that some of the side dishes aren't selling, I take them off and I change them. If residents are asking me for certain side dishes, I can change the side dishes and, you know, it doesn't incur a big printing cost, you know, as well, and I can implement those changes. You know, we've changed the side dishes several times throughout the fall season. And I think that's something we're gonna have to do, because it's, you know, we are here to serve the residents first and foremost. And I think, you know, it gives us, you know, once again, that opportunity to be responsive in a quicker way. So having said that, we are, we are having another Dining Services Committee meeting, which is chaired by Marlene Zeiselman. The other residents who are part of the independent living dining committee are listed here on the slide. So that is yet another way, you know, to provide feedback, you know, as far as the menus and our specials and things like that, and the food program. You know, we meet on a monthly basis, and that's where we talk about the food. So that's, you know, we will be, one thing we will be going over, coming up in a couple of weeks at the next Dining Services meeting, committee meeting, is the winter season menus. Some folks have been asking, when are we gonna change the menus for the wintertime? That's gonna be coming up in a couple of weeks. We're working on them right now. You know, so you can provide suggestions for those menus to either myself, which I'll get to on the next slide, but also to any of the members on the Dining Services Committee. I just noticed I changed it on the laptop.
It's magic.
I know, it's technology. We, you know, attached, on this slide is the different telephone numbers for the different numbers for residents to call. So for the Village Bistro, you can call extension 6432 to place takeout orders and to make reservations for the Village Bistro. Extension 6433 for, to place takeout orders and to make reservations in the Fireside Restaurant. And also my extension, which is 6424, and my email address is also listed there. In addition to these ways of trying to communicate changes and, you know, menu revisions, we try to make sure that we, when we do change those seasonal menus, that we put them in the mailboxes, resident mailboxes. I will also start to use, now that I've finally learned how to use that computer program, we do have the monitors in the bistro, and the one monitor that's in the clubhouse outside of the bistro. I will start putting the bistro specials and things related to the bistro on those monitors as well. You know, coming up, you know, in addition to starting the winter menus in the next couple of weeks, I've also been ordering some different things for the Village Market this week. So we've had some different things coming in, and I wanna kind of work on that, you know, over the wintertime, as Jay had, kind of made a little joke about before, but we do have bread, we do have eggs, we do have milk. So you don't have to, you know, go on the bus, go to the Stop &amp; Shop, get back on the bus, come back here. You can come down and, you know, purchase those things in the market, which I think was something definitely good that came out of COVID-19, when we had to do the market back, you know, starting in the spring and over the summers and all that. I think, you know, keeping those items, some of those items, you know, back to the more food-focused items has been a benefit, you know, to the residents here. So I'm very happy that, you know, some good has come out of all this. So that's, pretty much wraps up my report. I look forward to seeing you all in the restaurants and over the holidays. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. So a couple of comments there. 1,100 sugar cookies. I don't know, you know, if anybody has traditions of, you know, making cookies around the holidays, but we've done that some years in my house, we haven't done it other years. It usually involves fighting and yelling, and perhaps screaming at someone, saying things you really don't mean. Mike managed to pull off baking 1,100 cookies without killing anyone. So props to Mike and to the Dining Services Team for all of those homemade cookies that you all received. That was our little way of thanking you, and because we are unable to have our traditional holiday party, it was our little way to bring the party to you, as I mentioned. So I hope you enjoy the treats, they are tasty. Mike wouldn't let me taste test too many of them. My wife thanks him for that. So, but they are very good, so please enjoy. On a serious note, one thing I just wanna remind everybody about with respect to the dining program and COVID-19, and I kind of am reluctant to say it out loud, but I think I need to say it anyway. I wanna remind everyone that we are guided by the state of New Jersey when it comes to what we can and cannot do in terms of dining. We all know, for a great period of the year, indoor dining was not allowed at all. And we went through the long period of where it was either dropped at your door, or at some points, we were allowing people to come to pick up their dinners. Yesterday, it was announced in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that they have restricted indoor dining again. And where I live, that kills half the restaurants I'm able to go to now. Not that we've been out and about to many restaurants, but my point is, what's going on across the river in Pennsylvania may or may not come to the great state of New Jersey. And if the governor and the Department of Health make decisions with regard to indoor dining that change what their guidance is, we will need to abide by that. I am hopeful that it won't come to that, but I did just wanna throw it out there because if they make a change, it may happen fairly quickly, and we will need to adapt. And that's all of us, and it's another thing that stinks if it comes to that. But I just wanted to unfortunately throw that out there, and I don't mean to be the Debbie Downer on all the good things we've been doing with dining, but I just wanted to remind everybody of that. So let's hope it doesn't have to happen. All right, so with that, we're coming down the homestretch. I have just a few things I'd like to share with all of you before we wrap up our meeting. First off, I wanted to let you know about some new technology we'll be installing at the front door here at Monroe Village. So we're gonna be installing devices at the main entrance, right at the concierge desk, where people come in and out underneath the portico, it'll be inside the building, where we will be able to automatically take everyone's temperature. As you may know, anybody who enters the building through the front door, which should be everyone, okay? We take their temperature, make sure they have to fill out a questionnaire if they're a guest, they have to fill out the questionnaire if they are a team member. If it is a resident who has been away for some period of time, you went to visit with family and you weren't here for a day or two, not somebody who just went to the store, unless we're doing it for, if you just went to the store, I'm looking for Cindy to tell me that I'm not telling tales out of school, right? We don't do it there if you just go to the store. We have a form that you need to fill out, and that's all part of our COVID-19 preparedness, it's part of our safety measures, and it's also part of our contact tracing in the event that someone were to test positive. That's why we do all of those things at the concierge desk, it's why we ask everybody to come in and out via the concierge desk, via the main entrance of Monroe Village. So we're gonna be installing some new technology there. Right now, like I said, you have to go up to the concierge, and as I say to Gene every day, I'm going to get shot. You have to get your temperature taken, right? They do one of those at you. We're gonna install a thermal camera that will automatically take people's temperatures as you come into the building. It's also gonna have some facial recognition technology to it that will allow us, if you are in the database of the pictures, to know who you are, know if you're a resident, know if you're a visitor, know if we don't know who you are, and then direct you to a kiosk to fill out that questionnaire that we're currently doing on paper. It will now be electronic. So we're trying to get with the times here, and at least approach, you know, like, you know, the early 21st century here. So we're gonna be installing that over the next couple of weeks. Uh-oh. I gotta be careful, this technology was getting mad, I made fun of it for being old, I guess. Anyway, so that'll be installed over the next couple of weeks. You'll see more about it, but I just wanted to let you know it's coming. We encourage, all of you as residents, will be enrolled in the system automatically, so there's nothing you will need to do. We do encourage though, if you have visitors who come at any point, particularly those who come frequently, as the system is installed, we may ask them to enroll in the system as well. That way, they can move through more quickly and get to you for their visit. So more to come on that, and we'll share all of that as we kind of get that system up and running. But I wanted you all to know that that's in the works in the next probably a few weeks or so. Second thing I wanted to mention was to follow up on Cindy's comments about the Employee Appreciation Fund. Every year, your generosity amazes and humbles me. We all come to work here at Monroe Village and Village Point to do a job. And I do believe that we all come to do a job because we care about what we do, and we don't see it just as a job or just as a paycheck. We do value the relationships that we are able to have with all of you, and the friendships that develop from that. But to see the generosity that all of you put forth when it comes to the Employee Appreciation Fund is incredible. It's heartwarming, it's amazing, and it is very, very much appreciated by all of us here at Monroe Village. As you can see, oh, I keep hitting, I gotta stay away from this wire. All right, withstand more this way. As you can see here, you collected and contributed about $90,000 this year collectively as a resident population. And that $90,000 was distributed to 142 Monroe Village staff members. Now, if you do the quick math there, that means that on average, because there is a formula, I mean, back up maybe half a step, and you have determined that, you know, the way that the money is distributed is there's a formula, and it's based on the number of hours that each employee works. So the more hours in a year that someone works, the greater their appreciation fund gift is. And there's a minimum, and then there's a maximum, okay? But if you just do the average, take $90,000 and you divide that by 142 people, that's about $630 per Monroe Village team member. Like I said, some more, some less. The maximum this year was actually just over $1,000. I can't tell you, you know, I don't know about you, but you know, $600 is a lot of money to me, $1,000 is a lot of money to me. And to be able for you to provide that gift on average to each one of our team members is nothing short of amazing, and I can't thank you all enough for your generosity this year. On behalf of everyone at Monroe Village, thank you, thank you, thank you. We applaud you for your efforts. Thanks again for your generosity, it really does mean a lot to all of us. Okay, so if anybody's seen anything in the news this week, the COVID-19 vaccine has been all over the place. As we know, right now, there are two vaccines that are out there that are in the midst of getting approval for use, emergency use authorization, EUA, in this country. One is from Pfizer, and the other is from a company called Moderna. Yesterday, a panel of, I guess an advisory panel from the Food and Drug Administration, the FDA voted overwhelmingly to grant that emergency use authorization for the Pfizer vaccine. It's expected that the same will happen with the Moderna vaccine in the next week. So we are very, very close to where that vaccine is going to be made available. So I wanted to share with all of you what that means for us here at Monroe Village. We have been in contact and working very closely with the New Jersey Department of Health regarding the vaccination and its availability. We've been having discussions with them, I don't know, Cindy and Gene, it feels like every day on a different conference call with somebody about it. I had conference call fatigue yesterday, for weeks, if not months at this point, specific to the vaccine and its distribution and the plan. And we're gonna continue to stay in close contact with them all throughout this process. At this point, they have created what they call Group One, and it's Group One A, Group One B, Group Two, Group Three, and different categories of citizens, I'm gonna call it that, are in different categories based upon risk from COVID-19. So that is guidance that is provided to us by the state and federal government. And at this point, the residents of Village Point, being nursing home residents, the residents on our assisted living neighborhood, being also what is considered long-term care residents, as well as all of the staff members at Monroe Village and Village Point, they have priority access and priority status in Phase One of the vaccine distribution according to the New Jersey Department of Health. So those are the groups of people here at Monroe Village that will get first access to the vaccine when it becomes available to us. We've been working closely with not only the Department of Health, but also CVS. And yes, it's not only just the CVS that's on the corner, it seems like every corner there's a CVS or a Walgreens, but they have a very extensive operation of support for communities like ours through another subsidiary company of theirs called Omnicare, and through other venues and outlets. And the federal government has actually partnered with CVS and with Walgreens for the distribution of the vaccine. So we are working with CVS, and we've been in contact with them and had a few calls and webinars and discussions about how the distribution and the availability of the vaccine will happen for us. We will likely have vaccination clinics on site here at Monroe Village, first for those groups of people that I just mentioned, meaning the residents at Village Point, the residents in assisted living, and then all of our team members. We're also looking at ways that we can offer the vaccination here on site for all of our independent living residents as well. We are cautiously optimistic that we will be able to do that. We are cautiously optimistic that we will be able to do that, meaning on site, but I do want you to know that it may be part of a second wave of vaccinations because we do need to follow what the government protocol is with respect to that. We're not choosing. The government, both state and federal, is saying, this is the order. And it's really based upon susceptibility to acquire the illness and risk of transmitting the illness. Obviously, all of our residents in independent living, and I don't think I'm telling tales out of school, are over 65. So obviously, that puts all of you in the heightened category, if you will, just due to age. However, within that, there are other subsets that come into that as far as living arrangement and situation and whatnot. And right now, we're pushing for independent living communities to be seen as a higher priority than someone like my parents, who are over the age of 65 but live at home, you know, in their own house. And the reason I think it's an important distinction, even though my mom and dad might be mad I say this, is because you all live in a congregate setting. They won't be mad I say that, they want you all to be safe too. But because we live in a congregate setting, there's a greater potential or possibility of transmission, and I think that makes sense, and everybody understands that. And that's why we've taken all the precautions we've taken here at Monroe Village with respect to COVID-19. So we're trying to push the New Jersey Department of Health to recognize independent living communities such as ours as a priority just below what they've already identified in terms of nursing homes and assisted living communities, and then healthcare workers. And again, everybody who works at Monroe Village and Village Point falls under that category of a healthcare worker as defined by the New Jersey Department of Health. So please be patient. We will share with you information as it becomes available. We will let you know, so be on the lookout for updates regarding a COVID-19 vaccine administration here at Monroe Village. I don't know what the timing will be. It could be quick, it could be, you know, a little bit later, you know, after the new year or into the month of January or February. I just don't know yet. But please know that we are pushing to make our community and others like us a priority. So I just wanted everyone to understand where we're at with that and what our hopes and our goal is in terms of being able to distribute or have available for you to have the COVID-19 vaccine.